Good afternoon, everyone. Today is Monday, April 17th, 2023, and this is a work session for the Salisbury City Council. First item on the agenda is an ordinance to accept a DHCD grant for Internet service at Ann Street Village. Supposed to have Bill Garrett, and he is here. Come on up, sir. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. All right. So the grant is for the acceptance of funds to provide high-speed Internet service for the residents of the Ann Street Village community. We went into this grant about a little over a year ago. Finally got everything kind of finalized. We're looking at about $22,000 for the construction of the, getting the fiber two to the site, $3,400 roughly for the hardware needed to broadcast the signal out for the residents. And then we originally applied for $3,000 for a single year's worth of service, but the state contacted us and offered us double that, so we have twice the amount of time. So that is the $34,228 for the grant.
Nice.
So the fiber, is that through what?
It would have to be bid out. Yeah, we, that is a, we use ballpark construction costs based on what we anticipated it would be, and then the average monthly cost we use for other Internet services around the city, because it would just be a standard business account. So, yeah, it would be enough to cover that.
Okay.
Just so happy we got it.
Yeah, yeah.
Happy we can get grants and don't have to use city money.
Yes.
Everybody good with? Help individuals to stay connected to services.
Yeah.
Help, help, all the applications are online, help people with all of that. That's fantastic.
Everybody good with moving this forward?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is an ordinance to accept a DHCD grant for expenses associated with an event fund for the Main Street Districts. We have our Business Development Director, Laura Soper, maybe?
Hi, everyone. I'm on Zoom.
Hey, Laura.
So, hello, everyone. Included in your packet is an ordinance to accept a $25,000 grant to help create a competitive events fund for downtown Salisbury. It's from DHCD, from the TAG grant. If anyone has any questions, I am happy to answer them.
Can you explain what a TAG grant is for public edification, please?
Yeah, it's a technical assistance grant, so it's provided to local governments, nonprofits are eligible to apply, and it's to help with technical assistance for community needs.
Any other questions or comments from the council?
No.
Okay, we're moving this forward?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Laura. We'll have it on next week's agenda.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, next up is updates to the employee handbook. We have our Human Resources Director, Meg Kaiten. Good afternoon.
Hello. Okay, in your packet, you should have received the draft handbook. We've been working on this for about over a year. It really did need an overhaul, and it was rather outdated. It was last updated in April of 2020. I did meet with department directors, city administrator, and legal for their input and their review and their suggestions. The three major points I wanted to touch on were we added a code of ethical conduct. Currently, there is not one in the handbook, and we thought that was very important to go ahead and add that. Prior to that, it was just a vision statement and core values. Those are also in there. But we did add a couple other things: respect for individual, building trust and credibility, creating a culture of open and honest communication, confidentiality, setting metrics, record retention, and accountability. So that was one of the major things that we added. Another major thing that we added was we did create something called SPY CARES, and CARE stands for culture, acclimation, readiness, excellence, and service. And what this does is this ensures that new hires are becoming familiar with the city culture here. This allows employees to acclimate to their new workplace environment, their expectations, responsibilities. And what we did with this was we created a 30-day, 60-day, and 90-day check-in. So we're constantly checking in with employees to make sure they feel that they're getting acclimated and that they're able to do their job correctly. We then also created a six-month evaluation, and then we continue ongoing checkups without them throughout their career. And then the last thing I wanted to touch on was we went ahead and we, our grievance policy, we went ahead and updated that. We still have an informal and a formal grievance policy, but with the informal, this is now to be utilized for any grievance other than challenging termination of employment. The old way used to be start with your direct supervisor, go to your department head, go to HR, go to city administrator. Obviously, we still want employees to be able to feel they can talk to their direct supervisor, so there is that piece. But then, from there, what they can do is it will actually come to HR. I'm able to take a look at it, decide how I can jump in and help, and then if need be, we, at that point, send it up to the city administrator. For the formal piece, this is now to be utilized for any grievance challenging termination of employment. And the old way is, again, same thing, start with your supervisor, department head, HR, that kind of thing. From there, then, though, it used to go to a board for a closed hearing. The board consisted of one director picked by the city administrator, one director picked by the terminated employee, and then the director picked by the city administrator picks an employee of a similar stepping grade. And then from there, again, goes into a closed hearing. The concern with that was it is taking our employees away from their regular job duties. It is a rather lengthy process. So we looked and worked with legal to come up with a new way of handling this. And again, what it would be is if they have a concern, they bring it to HR, HR reviews it, and then from there, what we do is we send it out to a hearing examiner. So it would be a local attorney in town. They would be the one to make the final decision. So again, it saves our employees from having to take time out of their daily job duties to, you know, essentially be on this board. So those were the three main things that I wanted to touch on, but does anyone have any questions or comments?
It looks, it looks pretty well done, very thorough. I mean, my goodness. So we go ahead and pass this. Is it effective immediately?
Yes.
Okay. Have employees been given a copy or a draft?
So when it was sent out to you guys last week, I know it has been shared. I don't know if all employees have had a chance to look at it yet, but I've gotten a lot of feedback, so I'm thinking that they have.
Because it's been a long, lengthy process for every year, different pieces and different components of the handbook have been, we've gathered feedback. We can always take more feedback, but this is where we thought it was ready to present to you all as a, as a final version.
I just didn't know, like, if it goes in effect the minute we pass it, like, is there a transition period?
Oh, yeah, and we don't, I mean, we could pass it July 1 if we wanted to wait. That's not a problem. Because I'm sure.
Sure, with the resolution, you could say with an effective date of, I believe so. Ashley, you can't, I think that's.
Yes. I would recommend, once it's passed, just to go ahead and pass, and then that way it becomes effective immediately, and then there would be an education component to it. But it would be up to you, council, to decide when it becomes effective.
Now, I heard you say SPY CARES?
Yes.
What is that in reference to?
So that's for the new hires.
For the new hires?
Yes, for new hires, and then essentially for all employees. Within that, I won't go too far into the weeds, but we're creating a training and development program to essentially help our employees continue to grow within the city.
It's part, we've really focused on onboarding. COVID really pointed that out, that we need to make sure we're taking care of people from day one, but then beyond day one, you know, getting that first year, really.
Any other questions or comments?
No, fine.
No, I agree. It's something that's long overdue.
Yeah.
And I know we've done pieces here and there since I've been on the council, but this is very well done. I like the onboarding process you've created. That's, that's, I think, going to be very effective.
To do so.
Very important.
It is.
Any other questions or comments from the council?
Nope.
Everybody okay with moving this forward? Maybe, the only suggestion I would, I would have is if we do make this effective, maybe do it July 1, because that's actually the beginning of the fiscal year, and then there can be an education period between now and then on.
Yeah, there's a couple of things that we have changed that would, thinking about hours and benefits and stuff like that. That's moving from a 40-hour work week and some to 35. There's some things that will align with fiscal year, so that is a, that is good.
Yeah, I think that kind of makes sense for budget and all that.
Absolutely.
All right, everybody good with moving it forward, then?
Yes. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Next up is an ordinance to amend the Fire Department fuel budget. Deputy Chief Chris Sobarski. How you doing today, sir?
Good, how are you?
Doing good.
Good to see you all. So, yeah, as you said, looking to have an amendment of $45,000 into our fuel account. Unfortunately, our current FY '23 fuel budget has not been able to keep up with the fuel pricing for the year. We're already in the hole as we speak. So seeking $45,000 to get us through the rest of the year.
Questions or comments from the council?
None.
Everybody okay with moving this forward?
Yes.
We'll place this on next week's agenda. Do we, do you think we'll need to do a special meeting the following week to have the funds available, or are they going to be okay?
I think you got gas in the tanks right now, right?
Yeah, yeah, we, yeah. I don't think we'll need, we won't need a special. It will be able to get through.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
An ordinance to accept grant funds for expenses associated with the Union Railway Station stabilization project. This one, city administrator, Andy Kitzrow.
Hi, everybody. So the Union Railway Station, that is that beautiful union station that needs a little bit of TLC. We were luckily enough to receive a $500,000 Community Legacy Strategic Demolition Fund grant to help stabilize that building and then hopefully move it forward into redevelopment opportunity and make it a thriving place of business. This is phase one of a couple phases. This is just to get the exterior and the roof and some pieces ready for us to be able to then do some major renovations inside. It is a grant that we received from the city. We do have a sub-recipient, the owners of that building. They would be the ones who have to follow through on the next steps of this. There were a sub-recipient grant agreement, but you can detail in the package the details of the proposal of the, the use of that $500,000. I think the overall project is closer to 1.5 to get it to where it needs to be ready to be utilized. And there's a lot of different opportunities, I think, that exist there, but as we continue with our redevelopment and revitalization efforts along the railroad corridor, on rail trail and into that neighborhood, I think this is a marquee piece of property and a place where we can start some redevelopment going north on 13.
Andy, that is the building on River Avenue, right?
Yep.
Now, didn't someone purchase that building?
Maybe we're speaking of two different buildings. This building has been owned by the Knorr Brothers for a long period of time. It's one kind of behind the Mayflower building.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
I don't think there's been a transition in ownership, maybe LLC, but not a transition in ownership, though.
It is owned by Knorr Brothers.
I thought, I'm going to be quiet, because I actually thought it was purchased by the gentleman who, from what, before, before I think you even came on, I could, we had a, was it a grand opening or something with Jake and us? We went down to that area, and they were saying something about being purchased from somebody else, the guy who owned Evo?
Yeah, that's the Knorr Brothers.
They are the Knorr Brothers?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I didn't know who they were.
Yeah, that's the Knorr Brothers.
So they're the Knorr Brothers?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Yeah.
That's what I wanted to know, I wanted to be clear. Okay, so this $500,000 grant, along with them owning that property, will help revitalize that and renovate it?
Yes, so through the State of Maryland, through the Community Legacy, the strategic demo grant funding, we had an opportunity to apply for funding to start that process, that rehab process. It's an extensive rehab, so leveraging our resources to get the grant, they were a viable candidate to receive that, that funding. So this is the first part of their master replan of redeveloping that building to then be able to have it used for different commercial processes. It could be anything from a food court to a private industry restaurant, different things, but that, you know, the more, and it's right along a rail trail area, so there's a lot of different opportunities starting out of that space.
The building needs to be stabilized.
Oh, yeah, it's older than.
No, it's not older than.
I remember that building when I was a little girl. No, Jake.
Any other questions?
I was going to shade at you.
None.
Okay. We okay with moving this forward?
Yeah.
Yes.
All right, next up is an ordinance to amend Chapter 1.08 and 1.12 of the election board, the city campaign advertising and finance. So city clerk, Kim Nichols.
Well, the person is the lease.
Yeah, the lease.
With Wacomika County Board of Elections. That's above that, yes.
I'm sorry, I don't know why I checked that off, and then I went next.
No.
So, all right, so the lease for.
So, hey, everybody. This lease is approved every four years in, prior to our elections with the Wacomika County Board of Elections, and it's for the digital scan voting units, optical scan voting units, and other equipment and services that they provide. I can tell you, it was 8,400, yeah, four years ago, and it's, the quote was about 11,000 this time. So it's not really, I'm not concerned with it being just a little bit more.
I just have one minor note you might want to fix on the signature line.
Mm-hmm.
It says James Heath Mayor.
Oh.
I didn't.
I've been called a lot.
Okay.
We'll make sure we fix that.
Brad Bala Chico's name is spelled right, so that's good.
Yeah. It's a stretch. All right.
Are you okay with moving this forward?
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks.
All right, now the next item, the ordinance to amend Chapter 1.08 and 1.12.
So the Salisbury Election Board met, and we have someone here from Mr., Dr. Basheart, Harry Basheart is here. He, he really began all of this actually during 2020, and during COVID, when everybody was home, and he combed through the entire code and charter. And so the, these items are the changes that the Salisbury Elections Board would like to make. They met with legal, and it is ready to go. Do you want me to explain the changes, or have?
Any highlights in the main changes? I mean, to me, it looks like most of it was going from absentee to mail-in ballot.
Right, where the term absentee is no longer used, it's mail-in, clarifying the duties of the board. And that's in 108, and in 112, just updating the name so that it's consistent. Striking, a big thing is striking the phase financial disclosure statement and replacing it with campaign finance report, which are two different things, and that would avoid confusion in the future.
Makes a lot of sense to me.
Okay.
Kim?
Are there any questions or comments on?
No.
No.
Everybody okay with moving this forward?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And when discussing with legal, the Elections Board recommendations accounted to be three charter amendments, and they're not huge changes, but they, as you can, as you probably read, they need to, you know, happen to change the names in the charter to the City of Salisbury Election Board from the older name Supervisors of Elections, just to be consistent. And that would be the first one. The second charter amendment would reference challengers and watchers. Okay, so striking, representing candidates in any city election allowed at several voting places during the vote and counting of ballots, and inserting the language that you see here to allow voters, to allow each place of registration and election in accordance with state law. So that would be changed, as you probably saw. And then in the third charter amendment, changing all references to the Board of Elections of Supervisors of Elections to the City of Salisbury Election Board, and removing the random sampling of verifying signatures, since nobody is an expert at signature verifications. So those three things are what they have recommended for changing the charter. So we would just need your permission to start with advertising and.
Will this be a resolution for next week to start that? Is that how we do that?
It couldn't be next week. We couldn't, we, we need to advertise it.
Advertise the regular process.
Yeah.
Okay. Everybody okay with moving this forward to that process?
It would be the next meeting.
Any, any questions about any of these?
No.
Suggestions?
No.
And, and we didn't change any of the contribution limits to candidates, which is maximum of $250, and all the other stuff stayed the same.
I'd just like to thank the board, thank Dr. Basheart.
Yes, Dr. Basheart.
Ashley for the hard work.
Yeah. Great group of individuals on that board, and we appreciate their service. Okay, so we'll move this forward in the process.
Thank you.
All right, next up is the discussion on the labor code.
Taking lead.
All right, I'm taking lead. Sorry. I think I'm pulling it away from myself in my own front.
That's all right.
So what is before you is the labor code. Just as a recap, this is step two of a four-step process. In the fall, we created a charter amendment, resolution 2022-4, that allowed us to create a labor code. What was presented to you in step two is the labor code. If and when this is adopted, the third step would be to allow employee organizations to come into existence and for us to recognize them, and then the fourth and final step is to actually enter into a collective bargaining agreement with the entities. The labor code, as we've discussed previously, is open for three different organizations: general government, fire, and police. As we've gone through these drafts of the labor code, we have met with many members of each one of these potential organizations and some representatives who are representing them on their behalf. Most of those people, or few of those people, are here in this room, and I think it, we have presented to you what we would like this draft to be. Ashley can address any of those individual comments, but I think there's some people who may be interested in sharing some additional feedback, so I'll open it to your comments of us first, and then however you'd like to move on.
Any questions or comments from the council?
Anybody, I had, you have any question?
Go ahead.
No, no. Go ahead.
I was just going to ask about timeline for this, because, I was just going to ask about timeline. Like, what kind of timeline are we looking at? Because for, because if I remember, this is.
So timeline, there is, the closest timeline would be the adoption of the labor code. So if this was something that you all wanted to move forward with, we'd go through the normal process here, and then how quickly the employee organizations would be interested in, in unionizing would be the next step. But the collective bargaining agreement, the actual agreement where we would see an effect, we would do that as defined in the labor code currently, is we would go through a negotiation period between October and December of this upcoming year for something that would be adopting into the FY '25 budget that may, may not have budget implications.
Right.
So that would be the timeline. So between now and October, we, whoever got organized and adopted, and then we'd go through the formal process of going through the CBA, and Ashley can give you more specifics.
I think Andy hit the nail on the head.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we had that out there.
Just testing me?
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure we were putting that out there and letting folks know exactly what kind of time period we're looking at here.
Go ahead.
The only other question I had, and I just want to make sure, I heard it at some discussion we had about retirement. This, can you clarify retirement on this?
That it's not included in the scope of bargaining.
So they don't lose their retirement?
If they're vested now by law, they can't lose their retirement, correct? So the labor code is silent as to retirement?
All right, so at this time, what we'll do is open this up to comments from individuals or we're going to, or any of the representatives from any of the unions. So just a couple guidelines, we'll, we'll allow four to five minutes for each presentation or speaker. If somebody else wants to speak on the same thing, and they've covered what you would say, we would just say, hey, I agree with this person, just for the essence of times, to not have us repeating the same thing, because, you know, again, don't oversell. And I know we have some people online that may be making comments, so at this time, if anyone.
We do have somebody online. Do you, would you like to start there?
That's fine.
Kieran?
Good afternoon, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Kieran Doughty. I'm an attorney with Schachman-Baltz, Dean, or Davey in Baltimore, and I have the privilege of representing the criminal order of police of Wacomika County Lodge 111, which includes members of the Salisbury City Police Department, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak briefly on the proposed labor code. And I know some of our colleagues from the Fire Department, as well as from general government, are there as well, and I certainly don't want to take away from anything they might say, although I think I've been in touch with their council and their representatives as well, and I hope I can at least give a quick overview as to the union's comments. First of all, I just want to start by thanking the council and the city administrator and the staff there for their hard work on this. I know that this is a big change, and as the city manager spoke, or city administrator said, this is a multi-step process, and this is the second step, and we certainly understand the necessity of it. And we certainly understand the necessity of doing the second step in this process. And it's a very, very good start. And I can tell, both from our prior discussions with the city and, and the work that's gone into the proposal or the ordinance before you, that you're trying to put together a sensible code. There's a couple of high-level concerns that I think the unions have that I wanted to bring to your attention. First of all, for the purpose of the scope of it on page three, my clients on the police side are strongly recommending that, for the purposes of the police department, individuals with, at the rank of captain or above be a management employee. Currently, it reads lieutenant. I can't speak to the ranks in the Fire Department or in, in general government, but I think some clarification is needed. Generally, in labor agreements like this, you would, people who have the authority to hire, fire, promote, or things like that are normally deemed management employees. And lieutenants are, do not have that authority currently in the police department. They may have input, perhaps, but it's not substantive, right? At the end of the day, all they can say is, I think you should do this. The ultimate authority rests with the chief. The second big concern that I would just mention is on page six, and it actually gets to councilwoman's comment about, you know, are pensions included and things like that. Traditionally, and frankly, in every labor code that I'm aware of in the state, the traditional subjects of bargaining are wages, hours, and other terms and conditions of employment. That certainly seems very broad, but frankly, those terms are very, very well-understood in the labor community writ large. And they certainly include things like uniforms and dress codes. They include things like promotional schedules and trainings. But they also include things like leave. They include very, very complicated and sometimes even, but equally critical parts of an employee's life. Things like how leave is requested and approved. Things like retirement. And we understand that, you know, retirement can be different for different units and certain things, but that's a very, very critical part of the employee's life and the employee's ability to bargain. One thing that I think, certainly my client is comfortable with, is we would say, you know, other terms and conditions of employment excluding healthcare, because we understand, and actually the trend in governmental bargaining now is to consider healthcare as a single consolidated item that everybody bargains jointly. We don't want to put you on the hook for, for having to bargain three separate agreements for health insurance, but we do think that limiting it to these four topics is, I think, a little bit unnecessarily narrow. That doesn't mean, of course, that you have to agree to everything. They're just subjects of bargaining. They have to be discussed. They have to be included in the contract. That doesn't mean that you're gonna be sat arguing four different vacation schedules and three different holidays. Oftentimes, the parties will agree to that, but they are, I think, important mandatory subjects of bargaining, and they should be included. Last but not least, and I'll just close with this. I think there's, the unions are eager to move through all of this process. I would certainly be, encourage the council to consider putting in a provision that would allow the parties to seek immediate recognition after the passage of the labor code, and also to begin bargaining for a new labor agreement once the labor code is passed. That would not necessarily infringe on the budgetary authority of the council, but getting a new labor code set up until the first kind of full budget cycle is available, when everybody can get into all topics, I think would be commendable. With that, you know, we're certainly, I know the lodge and I think the other unions are happy to provide some, some more additional stuff to you in writing shortly. But I just wanted to raise those big concerns. Again, making sure that the folks that are in the bargaining unit are kind of, are, are below the rank of traditional supervisors and that we retain the standard language of wages, hours, and other terms and conditions of employment as the mandatory subjects of bargaining. I think that, that's the best practice wherever you go, and we certainly commend it to the council's attention. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions any of you might have of me, and I appreciate your time this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, I didn't know if any, do you want legal to respond to anything, or?
We don't have, we can save comments to the end, unless there's a point of clarification where we can address, but it sounds...
All right.
What Karen was saying, we understand what he was saying, so.
Okay.
I've taken notes.
All right, thank you. Next up, anyone else would like to make some comments?
Just name.
Name, Random Records.
So security number, rank?
Random Records, president, local 4246. So just to follow up, I'll piggyback off of Kieran, because I had one noted for that, too. I think we've gone back a little bit, because I think we've, we've gone up and down on this, but I noticed that in, for us particularly, it is now captain, and above is considered a management employee. When I think we, the last rendition, we had gone to captain and below was included in the bargaining unit. So now captain will be excluded. So I just wanted to get some clarification on that one.
If I'm understanding correctly, captain and below for Fire Department is what is requested, and lieutenant and below for Police Department is being what is requested. I think that's, I got those two items correct from what Karen had stated and what you're stating. Yep. Okay.
Keep rolling.
I, I, just, if you want to hit him, I will continue.
Okay. Just to piggyback off of the question from council, so if, if in fact, we weren't going to do the other terms and conditions of employment, which, you know, at, at this point, with everyone I've, you know, met with through meetings and whatnot, I can show you a whole stack of every contract that's on file for Maryland, for Fire Departments, even into PA and Wilmington, Delaware. And just about every single one of them has the same verbiage, that is, wages, hours, other terms and conditions of employment. So I don't think we're asking for anything outlandish, but we would like something similar, if possible. But if, in fact, if it's not going to come to fruition, just to get clarification on the protection for retirement, you know, are people put in a vast portion of their life to, to earn the, the retirement, the pension? So Ashley, if you want to clarify, you said that once you're vested, you cannot lose it? So does that mean that me, at 15 years, if I'm now vested, I'm good for the rest of my career, or if a new council was to come in? So if a new council comes in and they say, we don't like this LEOPS thing, we'd like to go to a traditional 401K, I will stay in LEOPS?
Once you're vested.
Okay. Correct me if I'm wrong, I think I noticed in there, in the original talks, we were speaking of the first contract being a one-year for this first year coming up, and then thereafter would be no less than a two-year. But I think the way it's worded in the latest rendition is no less than a two-year for any contract. So are we still going off the one-year for the first one, and then two and above? Or is everything two?
Everything is two. We didn't think it would be feasible to do the expedited year, so that's when we clarified the, I guess, the proposed schedule. And I heard Karen, he had some suggestions on that, but under this draft, we're not having an expedited year. We'll just follow the usual course, starting with bargaining in October.
Okay. And not to beat a dead horse, but I think it, it kind of serves this purpose, and this for anyone to go back and look at. So in the original introduction, where previous Mayor Day announced collective bargaining for all city employees, forgive me, I didn't timestamp it, but he mentions in there, employees will be able to collectively bargain for better pay and benefits. And I'm just curious, based on the scope of bargaining, what benefits fall into those? I see wages, hours, uniforms, something to do with promotional. But like I say, I don't think we're asking for anything outlandish, but I think our, you know, our retirement is a big issue. So I would like to know the clarification on what exactly benefits he was speaking of.
I don't know what he was speaking to specifically. I know benefits is a broad term. Most people think of healthcare and retirement as the primary benefits. You can argue some of these other listed items are benefits as well. These, as presented, that is where we've landed for what is in consideration right now. So unfortunately, I can't explain what previous Mayor Day was, was referring to. Sorry, Brandon, I can't help you on that one.
I just, I just wanted to bring it up as a point.
And it would be wrong for you to do that.
Yeah.
That's all I...
Yep, just as a comment, I'm looking through real quick. I do believe I might have led some people astray on lines 96 and lines 97. I just spoke with Mayor Heath, and it says, for the purpose of this labor code, an employee holding the rank of captain or above within the Fire Department and the rank of lieutenant or above within the Police Department is deemed to be management employee. I, I, we are okay with captain and lieutenant not being part of the management employee. So that can be changed a couple ways. You can't really say below is deemed a management employee. I would have Ashley wordsmith that the right way, but we could either say, change the rank of captain to assistant chief for the Fire Department and the rank of captain or above within the Police Department. We could make that concession. I've heard that from Karen and from, from Brandon specifically. That's the easiest change, instead of switching the entire management employee piece. Is that, did I say that correctly?
Yes, I can do that.
Questions? Better wait my whole career to ask that, so.
We appreciate your time.
Thank you, bud. Appreciate you.
We do.
All right, next up?
Hi, everybody. Thank you so much for having us today. My name is Sabila Ali. I am with APSME, one of the employee organizations. Specifically, I've been working with some of your general government employees, and they are lovely. I wanted to raise a couple of things and really just echo a few others. One is that, it sounds like everybody has a few question marks on the bargaining units' composition. One is the definition of a management employee for the general government employees. Also, I think could be a little bit cleaner and include people, or exclude people, rather, who can discipline. Typically, those definitions are pretty clean in terms of who can hire, fire, and discipline, or recommend, effectively recommend discipline. And so as we've been talking to folks who are below deputy director, but also above, I would say, like, kind of rank-and-file employees, those folks really do, you know, feel, and I think it's completely fine, feel very connected with being a supervisor in a way that is, I think, a little bit different than some other rank-and-file employees, and don't feel like they necessarily belong in a bargaining unit. So there's a few different ways that some different counties and other entities deal with this, and one is that they'll create a supervisor bargaining unit, and some is that they would just exclude supervisors from bargaining. And so I wanted to raise it as something that we're hearing day-to-day from your staff, and something that could be, I just think, cleaner and clearer down the line, particularly is, the next point I'm gonna say, is that we do want scope of bargaining to also include working conditions. Your employees value that so much. But also, when you come to work and you spend a lot of time at work, the thing that you care about is how you're treated and what it looks like, and it's not just about pay, and I think you all know that. And so one of the things that we've heard over and over again is, it is really great, but you can't really package some of these different working conditions in something like, you know, wages, hours, and some of the other things, I think, on page six, uniform and promotional schedules. And so really, the intent of collective bargaining is to make sure that employees have a voice at work, and that means that you're also valuing and respecting that it might be tough at first to maybe change some of the ways that we're doing things, but also that long-term, what you're thinking of is all of your employees and their ability to impact their careers, but also down the line, right? This is not just something that you all are doing right now, at this moment, but something that's gonna impact, you know, your city for decades to come. And so doing it right and taking the time to do it is well worth it. I think that you have a bunch of staff here who want to speak, and I won't use their time, but I think it would be great to hear from y'all on why working conditions matter, because it's your lives that are affected, right? Thank you so much, really appreciate it, but happy to answer questions and happy to also give you lots of information on how other cities and counties, not just in Maryland, but across the country do this. I would say this is a little bit atypical, some of the ways you're working and doing other ways that other places have found to be successful. It's probably just a path that is well worth it, honestly, to walk. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
So just one point that she brought up, the, how are you classifying the supervisor role in general government?
So specifically, the supervisor role is a department head, deputy director, or a superintendent. We use different terminology when it comes to waterworks. So the superintendent of the wastewater treatment plant and the superintendent of the water treatment plant, we would refer to as deputies, so they would be included into that. So there's four deputy positions, including those two superintendents. We have several assistant directors, they would be included in the bargaining unit, and then a lot of managers, and then other supervisors. Drooling down on the definition, there's a couple other people that that full definition does describe, and there are more people that are in our office, the mayor's office specifically, or our, the assistant director of finance would be excluded, Sandy's position because of the, the knowledge of, of all the pay and the finances of that. But that is where we are right now. It, it is kind of on par with the same ranks as...
Similar roles and responsibilities of, in the Fire Department and Police Department of the ones, and that's kind of, you're doing the same thing on the general...
Yeah, the, the Fire Department, if, rank-and-file is fire chief, deputy fire chief, assistant fire chief, and then the Police Department, you have a chief of police, and then Dave, assistant chief, or colonel, and then you have captains, and then we have department heads, deputy directors, and then kind of down, depending on the department.
Line specifically, does it mention those as breaking it? Can you hear me? Okay, sorry about that. Where in this does it specifically mention those specific department heads in the government portion of this? Because I'm just seeing, in 90 to 94, it's really vague.
It does not. I felt that the intent was to perhaps do a org chart, just because there wasn't clear, like, it's not easy to identify because of the superintendent ranks with general government, but we could certainly, if that addresses it, just exclude director, deputy director, and any superintendents.
So it is important. We have some nomenclature and semantics that aren't as clear as the police and fire with their rank structure. So people that we would want in, or positions that we'd want in, we would, for example, the utilities, it's a super, it's the utility superintendent. That would not be a superintendent position. We would have that as a management or assistant director level position. That's how we're viewing it. So we would, the plan is to change the title of that position within this process. So we, we've identified the positions we want, but again, we have not been as uniform with the actual titles of employees. So, you know, in this year coming up, in our new position authorization count, which we'll talk about in this coming week, we'll have some changes to some titles that would align and mirror more, more of this specifically.
And it's also based on job duties, is what?
Job duties, yep. Scope of responsibility.
So next time we take a look at this, we can expect to see some kind of org chart for the next time we take a look at this? Or just, when am I gonna see the clarification? That's all.
Yeah, um, yes.
I'm sorry.
But I...
I know we're in the very early stages of this discussion.
Yeah, um, it can be in an org chart, um, that shows citywide. It can be very specific positions that are included, because that's just as easy of a list, kind of choose your own format that you would like to see it in. Um, so, I can circle those in our budget discussion like this.
Would that be something worth, uh, adding as another addendum on this, as listed excluded positions?
Yeah, so what's interesting within this process, but, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, is as positions and, um, departments grow, you may have more rank-and-file that is created. So, um, as we, you know, establish a new position, let's say something wanted, we wanted to elevate a position to a deputy position, they would then cross over that line. It's not, it's very, it's somewhat different in police and fire departments. So, we can do it a couple different ways, honestly. Um, I would take your direction if you want to have that exact list of who's included and who's not included, or if you want us to better define a position and when that somebody, so when we are creating that position, we would.
Yeah, I think it's best to have a list, and then, and then in, under the 90 section, under management employee,
Mm-hmm.
have that referred to that addendum on the, attached to this when we pass it. Then that way, it's clear. It's specific on who is
At least until we get the titles cleared up.
Asking to have it s-
And then it doesn't leave any, you know, confusion or gray area with position. I think it's best to be specific and be clear. That's just my-
Sure. So we're talking right now about hierarchy of positions, deputy and director, but it also talks about required to assist directly in the preparation for and conduct of collective bargaining agreement negotiations. That's essentially HR. Um, they would be excluded, uh, people in our office. We can list everybody if that, if that's the more of the comprehensive lists.
Probably be best.
Um, and if it's more of an overarching, something that would fall within this department or this category of job responsibilities would then be removed.
Titles.
Title, yeah. Is that, I don't, possible?
Just to clarify, though, that some of those examples that you were referring to at the very end, they were being excluded as a confidential employee and not a management employee, but-
And I also think that when doing this, this isn't just me, I think that the government employees, which are, they're all government employees, but the actual employees here should be separated from the fire department and the, um, police department, and how it's done.
Well, it's defining what a management employee is overall, and so that's what they're listing.
It does that, but then you need to, it needs to be more explicit, I think.
That was the issue, because it's not easy to, it was easy to do for fire and police because you could just use rank, but for general government, because
It's tricky.
With the titles, it's, um, I don't think there's been some uniformity, as Andy spoke to about superintendents. It wasn't clean enough to do that. So I think if maybe we could do, allow us time to get an org chart together, and then moving forward, I think, um, characterizing titles, we need to just have more consistency on the general government.
Yes.
Yeah.
Right.
That can be done rather quickly.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Let's get to work.
Um, is there any other, anybody else would like to speak on?
Hello?
Hello?
I'm Kyla. I work in information services, and I'm here on behalf of the general government staff. Um, I guess I am piggybacking a little bit on everybody else, but our big, um, question right now is, we would like working conditions to be included in the labor code. Um, obviously, that's a big portion of what we were able to bargain for. Um, and my question is just, what is the reluctance on behalf of the city to include just the other terms and working conditions of employment with the exception of health insurance benefits, even since we are making that compromise on, on health insurance?
Ashley, do you want to take this one, or would you like me to jump in?
I mean, I think you should talk about it from the administrative standpoint, and I can talk about it from a legal standpoint.
Okay. Great. So, um, we always think it's easier to crawl before we run, um, understanding other working conditions in the people, you know, Kyla specifically. I know what we're talking about, uh, but I also don't know what we're talking about. Um, it is, it is a very broad, very, um, it's broad for a good reason, it's broad for a bad reason, um, depending on who you're talking to. And I think from an administrative standpoint, um, what we are picking out that we think are things that we want employees to be able to, uh, bargain on and negotiate on is what we have listed. Um, areas that we do not want negotiated are benefits, um, as they relate to healthcare because of the consortium, and, um, our, um, retirement, um, because of the financial impacts on that, and what , um, Ashley's already stated when it comes to the vested individuals. Um, as you heard earlier, we have proposed, and you all like, our employee handbook. Um, we spend a lot of our time and energy making sure we have a strong handbook that outlines opportunities and policies for the employee, which also has to be adopted by you. A lot of working conditions, other working conditions fall within potentially that scope, um, that people may, and I think what we've created is a fair document and is, and protects the employee just as much as the employer. Um, so that's where we have addressed a lot of those things. Um, again, with the labor code, um, this is a living document that can be updated at any point, essentially via council. So whether it happens during the first CBA or down the road, if we're like, hey, maybe we want to be a little bit more general, or we want to reduce scope, we have that opportunity. Um, as I say, you can't put the toothpaste back into the tube very easily. We've, uh, I think it's easier to start where we are right here, and that's where we feel comfortable, um, for a lot of different reasons. So that's, that's why we've presented it. Um, is it atypical? It is a little bit more conservative than you'll see with a lot of things. So I'll turn it over.
And I would just say, um, I think a lot of the terms and conditions, if Sebela or any of the other attorneys, they want to share some of the codes, but the ones that cities, Frederick, Green Belt, um, I did not see other terms and conditions used in those. So it was in, um, codes dealing with county governments. And I think we talked about the difference between cities and counties, or local municipalities.
We have a list printed out for you guys, too. It does include counties, cities, municipalities throughout the state, all that include that terminology, because honestly, what it is is just the ability for us to have a voice and bring it to the table. It does not mean it's going to get passed. It just means that it's something that we can address and feel heard, rather than not even having the ability to bring it up. Um, and it also leaves us to the whims of future administrations and not, and, like, the handbook just changed. It's only been done for two years, three years now, but, you know, everything that is included in grievances in the handbook is pretty much something that we would like to be able to, um, bring to the table and discuss. But as it stands now, we can't even bring to arbitration, um, based on the grievance definition, pay grade, increment steps, performance appraisals, unsafe working conditions, um, things of that nature. None of that's allowed into arbitration as this code stands right now. So for us, it's more just about, if you want us to have a voice, let us have the voice, and you can still say no.